City of Lincoln City. Let's have a roll call, please.
Roger Sprague.
Here.
Dick Anderson.
Here.
Gordon Eggleton.
Here.
Gary Ellingson.
Here.
Chester Norikis.
Here.
Wes Ryan.
Here.
And Henry Quant.
Here.
And do we have any citizens present who would like to talk to us? I don't see anybody. I think maybe we're past that item. Okay, minutes of the previous meeting, October 28th, 2013. Is there a motion to approve or amend?
Would so move to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. Special order of business under our presentations, number one item looks to be like D Lake undergrounding, undergrounding, I should say.
That works for me. Good evening. At our October meeting, we updated the agency on the design for the D Lake undergrounding. And specifically, we were talking about the north and south terminus of the project that was being proposed by the design consultant and Pacific Power. The, there was some agreement among the council that the south terminus that was being suggested, which is that this pole here sounded like it was, it was gonna be okay with the agency. And we talked about the reasons why. And so this, so at this point, we're going to continue with looking at the, moving the design ahead with that pole being the final, the terminating pole. As you can see, there's a little area, a planter area there where the guy wires could come down and, because what's holding that up, obviously, is the fact that the wires continue on through. And once those wires continue, stop, then they need something to guide them, to hold them in place. So that looked like the good solution, and it looked like this body was in favor of that. We begun our discussions of the design, looking at this location as the northern terminus of the project. And Pacific Power suggested that this location would incur some additional work and construction costs that weren't really associated with removing the overhead lines in the view corridor that we had focused on. And I won't read through all of the elements but shown here, but this is what they said would need to take place if we start at that pole, at Second Street. And it isn't that it can't be done, it's just that there was obviously some expense there, and you see that none of that work has anything to do with undergrounding in the view corridor. It's about $350,000 to do this additional work. And it looked like there would still be several hours of power disruption to the businesses, to the Kylos and the motel, in addition to all those homes that are in that immediate area. So the other, the one that, the other option that you looked at was that they were suggesting was to terminate at this pole. And this was, so there was quite a bit of discussion around that pole, around that proposal, and whether or not it was in the view corridor, and what the options were, and the costs associated with doing something different. So this screen shows what the, what it would take if we terminated that post, this is the work that would need to be done. So you can see the difference between those two options. So here, we're looking at about $36,000 worth of costs associated with terminating at that pole, rather than the pole that, the pole that you just saw. So with, there was some reluctance then with the agency about terminating at this pole, and so they, you asked if we could look at what the costs were, and if there were any other options. And so we did. There was, there was some concern, that we, so then, Power went back and looked at, at this pole, and so it's the tall one in that screen. As you can see, it's behind a retaining wall, but not that big of a retaining wall, and it is guided already. So the power company took a look at that pole to see if that, that was indeed an option. And they concluded that after looking at it a little more carefully, there probably, there probably, that probably was an option to terminate at that pole, instead of the other two that you've seen. So we think that's a pretty good option. It's not a free option, but it is an option that, that's available. So if that was, if it was to terminate there, you can see on the screen where the orange meets the red, there's a number 20 there, that's the pole that you just saw. In order to terminate there, we can't come down that pole, apparently. So another pole would have to be added, and that would go in where it says number 10, that white dot. So another pole would be placed there, and then that's where the wires could, the actual termination, not termination, but where the, where the undergrounding would connect up to the overhead. And so to do this, this sort of a fix, there's still a significant power outage, but this is a couple of hundred thousand dollars to do, to terminate in this, in this regard.
Additionally? Additional 200,000?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, an additional 200 to terminating where they, where that other pole was, at the other side of Sherewater, yes. Because it, yeah. So, let's see. So then you see the work that's involved here. This is another shot of that pole, so you can see how it falls within the view corridor. Obviously, it's well outside of the, the area that we're trying to, to free up from the lines. It already has a guideline on it. We talked to the property owner, with it, probably a new pole would be placed on that property line of the Sherewater and the home that's there on the corner. And we recently, we talked this week with that property owner, and she was okay with, with that, with this design as well.
Pardon me, Kurt.
Mm-hmm.
Using this pole, instead of the pole just south of this one, is an additional 200,000 dollars.
Correct.
Plus a couple of hours of electrical outages for the businesses.
Correct. Correct. So anyway, and then, one of the things that I wanted to mention was that, there was a question at the last meeting about the, the boring itself, the bore underneath the river, and what that cost was to the project. And so we looked that up, and it's about 240 feet that they're going to be boring, the rest of it will just go in regular ditches, trenches. And like I said, it's about 17 feet under the, underground, it's a 36-inch pipe that will be pulled through that bore. And the cost is about $192,000 for the bore and the pipe, placing the pipe. Now, there's conduit and stuff that go inside of that, but that's the cost. That, that isn't significant compared to the, in other words, the, the six-inch pipe that goes in that, I think there's four or five of them, it's $1,500 for the PVC pipe that goes inside of that thing, so.
But that's not an additional cost from the original estimate, though.
Correct. Correct. That's, that's part of the total cost. But there was some question on that, in the last meeting, so I wanted to bring that information back to you. So at this point, we'd like to get your thoughts on, on those options that you've seen, and then we will go from there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Kurt, I didn't see in the write-up a reminder of what our original budget, construction budget was, or I brushed over it. But when, when I look at these, the costs of these three versions, and I appreciate that, you know, I can't help but think of our original cost estimate and project included more land, more direction both way, north and south. And now we've skinny down, or shortened up, the south end by a block, half a block or something. And we've done by a block and a half or two blocks, here on the north end, down to the, at least the Kylos, which now seems to be our, our benchline, because we're adding costs back as we go north. So was our budgeting originally, you know, bad, because we used our last Ocean Lake experience to what it costs per block or foot or yard?
Well, we budgeted one, one point, 110, we budgeted 1.2 million dollars for the project. The estimate that we had before we, we got the Pacific Power suggestions was about, was 800,000. So we feel like we're, we're well within budget.
Okay, so I guess that's why I might clear, because the, the versions, because we, they all cost an increasing amount. So I want to clarify that they're still within the range or of original thought of a budget.
Right. Yeah. I think, I think we're still right in there.
Good.
You know, it'll hover around 800,000, either way we go. The, but these, these costs weren't really, wasn't anticipated by the engineer that was doing this preliminary design, all these additional costs of Pacific Power talking about, outside the project. He provided 800,000, thinking that we would trench from here to here.
Right.
Now, we, you know, I'm being conservative, you're exactly right. If we go from this pole instead of this pole, that trench is, comes out of that 800,000 estimate. But I don't want to, I don't want to say it's gonna be 700,000 and come back to you and say, you know, we're gonna be a.
No, that's fine.
Part of the unknowns of these undergrounding projects, and it's, it's worth considering, is I, I think that Pacific Power has always been low on their estimates, and have actually billed more. We're responsible to pay Pacific Power and the phone company for their undergrounding. We put the conduits in, and, and they string the wire and bill us. Now, Pacific Power hasn't been real far off on their estimate in the past, but Sprint, who was the predecessor to our phone company now, waited till the last minute, in spite of our insistence, and then did everything on overtime. And it was a, it was a huge bill. We negotiated on that for months to try to get, but they had, it still was quite an overrun. So we have not done an undergrounding project with CenturyLink, and don't know quite how they're gonna respond to this. They're a larger company, and may have done more of this work. So, but there are gonna be unknowns on an undergrounding project like this. So it's, it's wise to, to consider some contingency and expect some overruns.
Well, and I, I was also amazed at your pictures, and thank you, with the charts and writing on them, because it's amazing, by moving from, you know, again, on the north end, the furthest point, back, you know, half a block of what doesn't get impacted, or the additional things that, that get touched, and thus the higher cost. So it was helpful, I appreciated that information. You know, I'm for one, as I stated at the last meeting, by, by moving to the baseline or the altern, the version one, which, near Kylos, doesn't satisfy, for me, the clearing up the view shed. So I'm, I'm in favor of taking, I guess it'd be version three, which would move it up to the Sherewater, kind of the middle of the block. It get, still leaves a pole there, but at least you don't see the pole as you round the corner and first catch the glimpse of the ocean.
Other comments? Ryan?
Mr. Chairman, I would totally agree. I, I mean, I, I understand, I think, the, the extra cost is the extra cost, but version three certainly answers some of the problems that I had in my own mind, although I was willing to accept version, whatever it is now. It bothered me that the, the whole point was to get those poles out of there. I frankly would like to see the poles a lot further north, but that's, that's just my opinion. But certainly, the one there in the middle of Sherewater works for me, on the north terminus, and the south one where, where it is, it was D Sands, works for me. So I'm good with this.
Other comments?
I guess the, the only other question I have is, it's a timing issue, but I'm just assuming that we can coordinate with Kylos and Sherewater on six hours of downtime on electricity?
Yeah, that's.
Either day of the week, or?
Next steps, yeah. So the next steps would be to meet with those affected property owners, those the most affected, which would be Kylos, the State Park, and East Sands, and the Sherewater, and make sure that they're all aware. I mean, it's, this isn't a done deal, because we've said, this is our design. We were doing significant work in both the State Park and Kylos parking lots. And so we need to make sure that they're on board with that, and figure out when to do it. And like I said, this may be a two-step process. We may do the bore in January, and do the construction in the summer, at night. You know, if it, anything we do between June and November in the highway has to be done now at night. So it may be a, a summer night project. It can, it can be a winter project, you know, because we don't have a lot of mud, you know, in our projects around here, so we can work in the winter, it's just always much more difficult to do it during that period of time. But I can't imagine that, it's difficult to see a window, other than, in, in the dead of winter, to do the bore, and not put these, put, because of the pressure on the State Park, and because of the Kylos business. So those, those would be our next steps. We're also gonna be sending out updates to all the area residents, those that aren't directly affected, but, but have an interest in what's going on. So we have the, a list of those that we continue to put together. So we'll be sending out updates to them, we're finalizing the plans, and then working, putting together that work schedule and that construction schedule that we're just now talking about, so that's next, next in line.
Are you looking for direction from the agency at this meeting?
Yeah, we'd like to know, you know, about version one, two, three, or another version, or if you want other options, that would be great, when you can tell the design team to.
Okay, other questions or comments? If not, who wants to?
I'm sure, make their recommendation from this agency that we move on version three.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
All right. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Be back on the screen.
I guess we're down to the four Cs, and is that the one that we're going to postpone?
Yeah, so the four Cs, you'll see there's a grant request on the agenda, and we're gonna be postponing that until probably December, just so that we can get more information, and talk with the building department, and make sure that there's more compatibility with the estimate and the code. So just want to make sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted first.
Okay, let's go ahead with the minor revisions to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Cascades, West Council.
Okay. Okay, so as you may recall, we, we brought this to you on August 12th, when you entered into the IGA, and Cascades West Council of Governments has had a few minor revisions. And when we were before you before, we, we should have probably said, are you okay having staff move forward with any minor revisions? Or we wouldn't be here revisiting these minor revisions. The one thing that they have changed pretty minor, the program acronym was changed from the L C B E L P to the B E L P, the Business Expansion Loan Program. And the other part that they removed in the IGA is, there's a phrase, creditworthiness and basic program eligibility. And they said that they wanted to remove this because urban renewal staff, and not the COG, is screening for the original, I mean, the initial program eligibility. So remember, we have our own application that you've approved, and that is what we would call a pre-application, that someone would submit to us, and staff would review it. If it met the program criteria, we would set up a loan committee meeting and discuss that, take their input, and then bring that forward to you all to decide if you wanted to move it forward. Then there's a more lengthy application through the COG, which is where they really get into the nuts and bolts of what's, what's the collateral looking like, and what's the probability of repayment, all the banker-type stuff that we need their expertise for. So they said that they wanted to remove that, because we would, as I mentioned, we would be looking at that initial eligibility for the program. They wanted to remove the words "collect" and, because they didn't want to presume that they would be collecting the payments, and that that level of detail really didn't need to be specified in the IGA. And the last one is that they didn't want to have in there that they shall not be responsible for any federal and state requirements, because in general, the COG, as is the Urban Renewal Agency, as is any other government that's doing a loan program like this, would have to meet whatever standards for state and federal requirements. So that's kind of, they said they wanted to remove that, because it just applies in general, that they are responsible. So with those minor revisions, we would recommend that you approve the revised IGA with the COG.
Okay, questions or comments? If none, what's the pleasure of the council?
I would move to approve the revised IGA with the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments for Administration of the Business Expansion Loan Program.
Is there a second? And discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? It's carried.
Okay, thank you. And so just for our viewing audience, to remind them, the Business Expansion Loan Program, the goal of this program is to provide existing businesses and nonprofit organizations with funding for business expansion within the urban renewal district, including building renovation, additions to existing buildings, equipment purchase, and business diversification and relocation assistance. Loan amounts are anywhere from 1,000 to 75,000, and the interest rates vary depending on the loan amount borrowed of 0 to 2 percent. People can visit the Urban Renewal Agency page at the city's website, lincolncity.org, and we'll have all of our information up there, and they can always contact us at the office. Moving along to the Local Program Support Grant. At the February 25th agency meeting, the Local Program Support Grant was reviewed and approved as an economic development tool by the agency. In March, the agency approved grant funding for three projects, to the Small Business Development Center at the Oregon Coast Community College, which we hear is quite, moving along quite successfully. In October, the Bi-Local Lincoln County Association submitted two phases of a proposed project to receive grant funds. And the Urban Renewal Loan Committee met to review those applications, had some discussion, and staff relayed feedback to Bi-Local Lincoln County based on that discussion, and they turned around and revised their applications to better meet the program criteria. So now, before you, they've got one application, and in brief, the application is requesting $7,625 to basically do three things. It will contract with local individuals to recruit 150 new retail businesses located within the urban renewal district. $800 is what they're asking for, for that membership recruitment support. And then those businesses would be joining the Bi-Local Lincoln County Association with a one-year membership. And they, they would encourage them to offer incentives, and this would be $5,625 for the 150 memberships. And then the new enrollment also includes an online business profile page for each of those 150 new businesses, and that would be 1,200, they're asking for administrative contracted support. So we did have a loan committee meeting this evening to discuss this revised application, and this program speaks to the second program objective, which is to create new economic development programs available to area businesses. And so overall, the committee relayed to staff that they're generally supportive, they do have some reservations, and they requested to have full discussion at this agency meeting. And it is possible, just to mention, it is possible that we receive other applications for this budget year. We can't predict that, but we haven't had any inquiries other than this one at this time. So are there any questions?
Questions? Surely there are some.
Could, could anyone from the loan committee, you know, share with us, who weren't there, either thoughts or concerns, or, you know, what, what you saw or didn't see that was an issue?
I wasn't there, but I, I too would be certainly ready to hear more about it from our, our committee members.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
I, I was at the committee meeting as one of three council members, and I'm not trying to speak for anyone else, I think we, all three of us were pretty much on the same page. And we, we don't want to have a, a kind of a negative attitude kicking this off, kicking, seeing this program get started, but we do want to make the applicant aware that we are expecting results to justify, you know, the expense of the grant. And something for me personally, the person making the application has done other business with the city. He's now retired, but he's volunteering his entire time for this proposal that he has made to us. And Chester, Chester was on point with number two of the program objective, and that is to create new economic development programs available to area businesses. And this essentially is what this would be, would be doing. But I think, and as I stated, recommending to the rest of the, the board, that we make this grant, that we also let the applicant know that we're going to be monitoring it at the, the end of the, the work that is done, to make sure our, our grant monies are, were spent for the manner that had been explained to us, in the manner that has been explained to us. And once again, from, what's the guy's last name?
Faust.
I forgot, Mr. Faust, he's, he's done several things with the city council, actually, and I can't think of one thing that he has ever done that he hasn't done exactly what he has said, in the manner that he has said he would do it.
So is your recommendation that, to the agency, that we go ahead with this?
That's correct. Our recommendation to the Urban Renewal Agency is that we support this grant.
Okay.
In the amount of 7,600 dollars.
7,625, I think, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm sure that was about as clear as mud, but I had to, I had to put a slight disclaimer in there to let people know that we're trying to be responsible in the way that we're going about this, and not just, you know, basically write a check.
Okay, other questions or comments? Chester?
Mr. Chair, I felt that this potentially positive economic development results, one of the program objectives for the Urban Renewal Local Program Support Grants is to create, create new economic development programs available to area businesses. And I'm hoping that this will do that. I'm, I support the program with reservations.
Okay.
The Bi-Local program has been in existence since 2009, is that right, Counselor Quant? And personally, I haven't seen a whole lot of impact as a result of it. I mean, I've seen stickers that say Bi-Local, but other than that, I haven't been terribly impressed. I'm hoping, I'm hoping it'll, this program will, will change that. I'm hoping that North County will get more, more attention, and, as I say, have this potential for, for involvement from local businesses.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I'll throw my two cents in here, too. I was approached by Bi-Local a long time ago, and things like this, as a local business owner, I didn't feel it was worth my while, I thought it was another advertisement ploy and things like this. I understand, I support Bi-Local, I buy everything local, I hardly ever leave the city or the county, and things like this. I just don't know, I, I like to hear from a guy how he's gonna approach the whole system here, what's he gonna do differently? Because right now, he doesn't. he doesn't have that many members up here in Lincoln City, and he's targeting a special group, the Urban Growth Boundary, and it's going to be interesting how he intends to get this many members in time. And like I say, I think it's a stage in approach of how we're going to pay part of this money off as far as it goes for the six weeks for administrative contracted support and four weeks for membership recruitment support. They're going to have to hit the ground running, and they should, you know, we actually have to really have to hear from Guy what's going to happen. And I say, I have my feelings about it. My feelings are, if it doesn't work this time, please don't bring it back to us again. That was my feeling.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Maybe we weren't as much on the same page as I thought we were. It'd probably be a good idea next time to have a few more minutes in the meeting. But part of this grant is performance-based. So it would be reimbursing business, or basically paying businesses dues for a period of one year. And so, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if businesses are not signed up or don't support this, part of the grant will not be awarded. There's kind of a, if you want to use the word, like a safety valve built into it for part of, for part of the grant. It's performance-based. And for me, that along with the fact that Mr. Faust is in charge of at least this particular part of the effort, I, and it's clearly stated in the program objective, I don't know how much cleaner of a deal we could get from somebody for this type of activity. And he's volunteering his time himself. Sorry to repeat part of it.
No problem. Other comments?
Chairman, I guess the way, and this was helpful, listening to the folks who listen to it more detailed than the rest of us. But the way I've read it, it's not a new program. We know Bi-Local has been in existence and has some stake of credibility around that. I view this request as a way, if I'm reading correctly, to hire a point person or pay someone, you know, for emphasis, if nothing else. And as Gary has indicated, you know, it is performance-based with some goals, and I like that process. So my interpretation is they've struggled along since 2009, found and refined their program, and this is a either second or third-ditch effort to see if with concentrated effort rather than volunteer to make the numbers move of participation. Personally, I don't think it's a lot of money, $7,600. We all know intellectually the value of Bi-Local, and I think it's worth the effort.
Okay. Any other comments? I'm a little bit concerned, but I kind of agree with Mr. Quant. I'd kind of like to have Guy come and talk to us and tell him, tell us how he plans to go ahead with it. I'd like to kind of see the business plan, so to speak, so we could get a feel for how this would be implemented. Is there any-
Mr. Chair.
-about that?
Yeah. And Allison can correct me if this is not exactly accurate, but Guy has taken an active interest in this latest proposal because he took another earlier shot at it, and it was given back to him with the reservations that were presented at that time. And so I don't know why he's not here tonight, but I, his, other than not being here, his work has been current, and he basically has come back before the agency with what he was asked to do. So having him here in person to kind of somehow, you know, recommend this, I don't know what more he can do for, unless you have a specific suggestion relative to his outline. And if the agency needs more time to work on it, so you could come up with more suggestions. But I, as I said, we did that the first time he made an application. Now he's come back with what we suggest, or what we told him we thought the application needed.
Okay. Yeah, Chester?
I would support your proposal, Counselor. Mr. Chair, I see no harm in postponing this for a couple of weeks and asking Mr. Faust to come before us and talk to us about his proposal.
Okay. Other comments?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, other than I'm wondering what he would tell us new. And, you know, you know, I didn't do the math, but, you know, it's allocated with $800 for recruitment of, you know, 150 new retail businesses in the urban renewal district. So divide 150 and $800. And so if he doesn't get 150, you know, I'm assuming as Gary indicated, you're not spending the 800 and down, you know, all the way. And I guess I'm wondering how much detail do you want to get into, you know, that three hours a day somebody's going to be door knocking? Or, you know, what would a Guy Faust come and tell you? That if you know the Bi-Local district philosophy and mission, he's trying to sell, they're trying to sell memberships, both business and individual.
Right.
And we're providing, it would appear, we're providing the incentive money and some maybe, you know, contract money to have somebody do it.
I guess my reticence is the fact that we've had two or three stabs at this thing over the time, and I just haven't seen it really produce much. So I'm just concerned. Besides that, this is going into the slower time of the year business-wise, and I just wonder how many businesses are really going to want to go with it.
But again, this is a goal. So you're going to say if you don't make it, you don't get any of it? Or how you go to work? And that's why I'm kind of flipping back challenging you.
Yeah.
Because we haven't. Urban renewal hasn't been in this.
No.
Okay. So yes, Bi-Local has been around. And, you know, maybe, you know, maybe this whole, you know, if there's a message that needs to change, you know, by having one person spending so much time on this recruit, maybe that one person will hear the message better and help refine the Bi-Local. Because I think that's been part of the problem in the past, is everybody's been recruiting members or potential members, and somehow the word back or the no's, the message of why hasn't gotten back to a central point. I don't know. But, you know, I'm just, for one, I'm certainly a supporter of Bi-Local and agree with the philosophy. And, you know, if this helps get it to a point of some kind of level to, you know, this may be it. You know, it dies after this, or it kicks off. And I think it's a small investment for some economic development push.
Okay. I tend to agree with most of what you said.
You don't have to.
Chester?
Mr. Mayor, if I may correct you, they're not selling memberships. They're basically giving them away.
Right. I agree. That's the money that they're asking from us. That's the, right. I agree. So it'd be interesting, again, if you're not able to give away 150.
And that's what I'm saying. There's a timeframe in there of, I think, six weeks or four weeks. There's a timeframe. They've got, you know, they've got to put a big portion of this to get that done. So we might end up saving money in the long run because they won't get 150. So that's where-
Well, I'm hoping they would-
I hope they do.
Go.
I hope they do.
You know, I think that's been the issue here. They haven't gotten any mass, if that's the right word. And, you know, I think they're asking for help to get to some kind of level of mass that would help North End County.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Gary.
You know, whatever has been the case in the past, I mean, the past is the past, and this is this arrangement for giving this a new best effort. But I think what the businesses are going to be wanting, when you talk about, well, give them away, I mean, there will be a slight responsibility that the businesses have to fulfill the tasks that the Bi-Local organization will have everyone be involved in. Then what the hope is, is that this, if you want to call it dues, the businesses will see the benefit of next year paying their dues, you know, and wanting to belong to this, because they will have received much more than this in benefits. And I would like to ask everybody, and I've got a small business, too, that don't just think about your own small business, think about everybody. You know, think about the talent and see if this can start to help with the seasons and even busy seasons, anything that can help. Just don't just think about your own situation, but everyone else's as a whole.
Okay.
And maybe this will work. Who knows?
Okay. Sir, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that the agency approve the request for a grant from Bi-Local Lincoln County.
I would second that.
Okay. Any more discussion? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I guess it carries. All right. Anything else, Allison?
Not from me.
All right. That takes us to public hearings. We have none, no resolutions. Agency comments?
I've got a comment.
Okay.
Bi-Local, also if you turn around and use cash when you buy purchases and things like this, it also helps out the local economy because we're not paying a big corporation someplace extra fees. Your cure fees, every time you go in and buy 95 cents or a dollar worth of stuff and you pay with a credit card or debit card, that person that's in business has to pay for that. And that can end up to quite a bit of money at the end of a month. Trust me, I know. That's all.
Other comments? If not, we are adjourned.